Regarding how we are going to manage the threat of coronavirus in the city. This time is not on our side, your worship with your endangerment. We're not going to a lot of talking. But be assured that all media houses, reputable media houses in Malawi are represented here. And members of the media before you is his worship, councilor Odebo, mayor of Blanta City. He's franked by very senior officers from my police service. We also have members of society of medical doctors here present. I don't know if we have representative, we presented from vendors, but, but all the information that you require as we move on to fight against this pandemic, I think you'll be able to get it here. So without much ado, may I request your worship to make the statement and we proceed from there.
Yeah, thank you, attorney. Welcome all media houses and especially many members of the media who say stuff like that. We are gathered here just to tell you about the position that the council has taken in regards to this pandemic that we are having, COVID-19 coronavirus. It's titled ban of street vending, wedding celebrations, parties and other social gathering in Blanta City due to coronavirus disease, COVID-19. Fellow residents, today I come before you with both sadness. I'm taking away some of your most treasured freedoms and hope that my actions will ensure that you are protected from coronavirus disease, COVID-19, and do live to enjoy these rights in the future. In line with COVID-19 preventive guiders from the Ministry of Health and the Society of Medical Doctors, Blanta City Council has with immediate effect banned all large gatherings, including street vending, wedding celebrations, parties and other social gatherings. The council has also placed limitations on church gatherings and introduced mandatory preventive measures for shopping centers, public buses, banks, hospitality industry and all other public spaces. The council worked with security agencies to enforce these bans. The public health threat that is amidst us became widely known on 1st January 2019 when the Chinese government informed the World Health Organization about cases of respiratory illness of unknown origin in Wuhan City. On 7th January 2020, Chinese scientists identified the cause of the new disease as a new type of coronavirus. This type of virus originally unknown is thought to have spilled over from animals to infect humans and later was able to move from person to person, effectively becoming an outbreak. Due to its rapid spread, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 outbreak a public health emergency of international concern on 5th January 2020. And on 11th March 2020, COVID-19 was declared pandemic by World Health Organization Director General. While we are yet to register a case, all indications are that we may soon have some. It took only 11 days to increase from 100,000 confirmed cases globally to 200,000. Then four days to 300,000, then two days to 400,000 and just a day 500,000 cases. To date, about 34,000 people have died of COVID-19. The numbers continue to rise and the pandemic is now settling in Africa with all our neighboring countries reporting cases. The good news however is that if we all follow the following simple and inexpensive steps will reduce the risk of coronavirus and its severe impact. Hand hygiene, wash your hands regularly for not less than 20 seconds with soap and water or alcohol-based hand rub. Don't touch your eyes, nose or mouth if your hands are not clean. Cough etiquette, when you cough or sneeze, cover your nose and mouth with a flexible airbag or disposable tissue. Social distance, avoid close contact at least a meter with people in general, especially those who are unwell. Protection of others, stay home and isolate from others in the household. If you feel unwell, whether it's a fever, cough or shortness of breath, do not go to hospital or clinic. When to seek care? If your symptoms worsen, trouble breathing, persistent pain or pressure in the chest or feeling confused, call 54747. Call 54747. The bans, limitations and mandatory procedures we have announced today are one way of strengthening the cooperation level adherence to the above practices of good hygiene. These and other instructions you are already receiving from the Ministry of Health complement the 20th March 2020 declaration of the state of disaster by his excellency Professor Arthur Peter Matarika, the President of the Republic of Malawi on 23rd March 2020, press briefing by the Ministerial Committee on COVID-19 and context-specific guidance issued by Dr. Dan Amarika, Secretary for Health on 27th March 2020. The council is also getting guidance from the Society of Medical Doctors who through Dr. Amos Nyaka, their president, have offered to provide technical services to all local councils and any interested organization on COVID-19 prevention and impact mitigation strategies. The social gathering that have been banned shall include wedding celebrations, bridal showers, street vending, engagements, live band performances, cruises, open space aerobics, sporting activities, parties, nightclubs and other activities that attract large number of people and/or make people breach the recommended social distance of at least one meter. For funerals and other emergencies, the council is advising the conveners to take precautionary measures by limiting the number of attendees and also ensuring there is provision of water buckets and hand washing soap displayed at strategic places so that everyone can access, wash their hands and observance of social distance. The council is advising all vendors who were applying their trade along the streets to immediately relocate to the designated markets where water buckets mixed with chlorine have been placed in all strategic points with the belief that all market users will make good use of the facilities. We would like to urge all residents to do their part by joining the council in the fight against this pandemic. Let us do the right thing during this time when we are under the threat of contracting this life-threatening virus. In so doing, we together overcome this problem. In support of the measures outlined by the state president, the council is asking that every building, including worship houses, shops, offices and homes should have water buckets and hand washing soap just before the entrance so that no one should enter them without washing their hands. We've declared a month-long Make Your Environment Corona-Free campaign to ensure that every resident is taking lead in abiding by the measures that have been put in place to prevent the spread of the virus. During this period, the council and the Malai Police Service together with other collaborating partners will intensify inspection of all business premises, offices, shops, all residential areas and other public premises to make sure that all these measures are being adhered to. For those that do not comply, the council shall use all available pieces of registration to ensure that the set hygiene standards are complied with and our residents are protected. In conclusion, the council would like to make an appeal to all residents to utilize the door-free line 526 for any inquiries. It is my hope that you all learn behind Blanta City Council in ensuring that these preventive measures are a success. This is the time for all residents of Blanta City to join hands and protect the health of everyone. If you see someone disgracing from these guiders, tell them they are risking the future of all of us. May God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. That's a statement from his worship, the mayor of Blanta City. Before we give you a chance to ask questions, may I request the representative of the Society of Medical Doctors to say a few words in support of what the mayor has said.
Your worship, the mayor of Blanta and the Minister of the Council. Let me also recognize Dr. Dan Njungu, whom we wish very good year. And also my colleague from the district of Blanta, Ajani. And also my colleagues from the side of medical doctors, Dr. Tadewo and Dr. Nakwewa who are here with us.
Thank you, your worship and Dr. Dan Njungu for bringing us here. Dr. Amos Nyaka, the president of our society, Senator Dada. My name is Titus Diva, I'm an epidemiologist. So I, in short, I study disease and its distribution in populations, how to prevent disease and how disease can be transmitted from one person to another and through populations. The president of the society would like to thank you, your worship, Councilor Ndepo, and the Director for Health here, Dr. Dan Njungu, for inviting the Society of Medical Doctors to advise in this time of a public health crisis. A difficult time for the citizens and a difficult time for us as a country. Supporting authorities on health issues is one of the critical pillars of SMDs, their existence. But we cannot do much if we are not invited and given the necessary access. So thank you, your worship and your leadership here for coming forward to us. The role of the Society of Medical Doctors during this pandemic is to four. One is to act as an advisory board to the national and global bodies in charge of implementing policies to mitigate the impact of this pandemic. Second is to develop competences of both health and non-health professionals, including members of the public via awareness activities as well as orientation and trainings on national and global developments of COVID-19. We would therefore like to extend our availability to all other entities with interests similar to that of the Blanta City. To quickly get in touch with us, because our membership is spread countrywide, we're willing and very happy to support in this time of need. The mayor has provided eloquently so a background to the disease which is now termed COVID-19 before he presented his measures that he's putting in place and which we support. Let me start by giving you the current picture of the epidemic since it starts in December 2019. COVID-19 started in one part of China, but today it has already spread to almost every country in the world, including Tanzania, Mozambique, Zambia. In that very short period, there are 723,740 confirmed infections. Why is it spreading this fast, some may ask? It is spreading fast because it is like any other cold or flu or chifine. That is moves from one person to the next, simply by droplets. As long as the next person is within one meter of the other person, when that person coughs and the next person gets it. Also as human beings, we are very social. We like things that bring us together. We like gatherings, we like hugging, kissing, we like holding hands. That's how we are. The moment we stay in contact like this, we enhance its way. So it is going through the things we love the most. I think that is why the mayor started by saying he is taking away some of your precious freedoms. At the moment, it has been shown that one person, if I am infected, I can transmit to two or four other persons. So between two and four persons can get it from me. If those four persons also don't follow the guidelines that have been put in place like hygiene and also self-isolation, another four from each of those persons will get it. The rapid spread is also impaired due to the virus's own resilience. For example, if someone coughed now onto a surface or they coughed onto their hand and then after coughing onto their hand, they hold a door or another surface like this one, a wooden surface, or even your mics here. It will stay there alive for the next four days. So in other words, if someone touches that surface and then they touch their face, like their eyes, their mouth, their nose, it's moved from that person who touched it four days ago, who coughed onto that surface four days ago, and it is now with you as the next person. You do the same, the next person gets it. It keeps going like that. The hand wash is critical because soap, the soap we know, this simple soap can kill the virus. This only succeeds though this is important. If you use soap and if you have the soap and water flowing through for no less than half a minute, so at least 20 seconds or more of hand wash is critical, as the mayor said. Another directive, this is common among those who are working in the health sector, is to have an alcohol-based hand rub. This hand rub needs to have alcohol at least 60%. If the alcohol is less than this, then it will not be effective. And let me add here, because some of the residents of the city may think that any alcohol is useful. This is far different from the alcohol we enjoy in beverages. It has to be of that percentage, but also drinking alcohol really doesn't help. Because first, by the time the virus is in you, it goes to a part of the body that we use for breathing. While the alcohol in beverages goes to the part of the body that processes food. So those are completely different. So taking alcohol drinks is not part of prevention. But using alcohol to rub your hands and clean your hands for at least 20 seconds is part of prevention. Another very effective way of stopping the spread of the virus is making sure you stay home if you're feeling unwell or if you're coughing or sneezing. The moment you stay home, if you have these symptoms, you reduce the chances of taking the disease from yourself, should you have it. By that time you don't know, right? But you may actually have it. You got the chance of spreading from another person to another person. Or if you move around with chifine, imagine if you move around, like everyone you meet, almost everyone you meet, you may actually get it. So that's, that's one way of being responsible to other residents of the city. So what if the symptoms worsen? If the symptoms worsen and you're feeling very breathless, that is the time to use that phone number, which the mayor read out. The mayor read out 54747. There's another number which is 0887371288. Don't worry, I will share this statement with you and you can have it written on various social media places. If you call these numbers, you'll be in contact with health authorities, including my colleague here, Ajani, who are working day and night to receive calls and to help people who are home and struggling with symptoms like this. You can also help the mayor and the council by ensuring that no one is digressing from these measures. We have put measures, right? His worship has put a lot of measures in place. I'm sure the police do not have enough people to police these measures. It is hard. It's a whole country, right? In this case, a whole city and we need to control. The best police for the person next to you is yourself. If you encourage the next person to behave as the mayor has advised, you support the mayor's action, you will protect the city. If you see someone hugging, shaking hands, advise them appropriately. If you see an overloaded minibus, you remind them that the Secretary for Health has advised that minibuses should carry less people now, even buses. Don't just watch. A church is overcrowded and you just sit quiet, you're part of the gathering. A funeral has a lot of people, yes, funerals are important, we need to respect funerals, but if it has a lot of people, that becomes a hazard to the population. So we need also to speak up there and advise. I'm sure people understand because what we're trying to do is to protect people from the disease. Mayor Ndepo, allow me to tap on another question that people may have. Is this disease dead? Is COVID-19 dead? A quick answer to this is yes, it is. 34,000 people have already lost their lives as a mayor. The disease seems to be more severe to people who are older than 60, so 60 and above. It is getting more severe and more people who are dying are within that age group. It does seem to be either without any symptoms or mild or just like a regular chifine. In those people aged between the young and 20 years and then more people between 20 and 40 and 40 and 50 are also getting the disease and struggling with it. So one way, if you look at this, one way of limiting the impact of this disease, one way we consider is by keeping a distance from our grandfathers and our grandmothers. Supporting them as much as possible, so that they stay, they don't have to move around to make a living, but they should stay as isolated as possible so that we can protect our treasure. The grandfathers, the grandmothers are our treasure. So if we allow them, if we mingle too much with them, we will get the disease to them. And unlike the young, who, most of them are surviving, they may not. This is not to say that the young may not get it. These are just numbers, probabilities. So the risk of dying is higher when you are older, 60 and above. Getting, increasing as the numbers, the ages go down, decreasing as the ages go down. If we can keep this population as hygienic as possible, if we can keep them as supported and as isolated as possible, we will help them a lot and we will help the nation a lot. Let me add that what we know so far is based on what we have learned from our other societies. We have been reading, we have been following what has been happening. I'm sure you have been seeing what is in the media. Me, Path and Mafnila there have been reading in the scientific literature to see what's going on. So this is based on that. But the disease does not read books, it does not read order. It may come here and behave different. So all of us, we need to follow the current guidelines 100%. Another reason for emphasizing prevention is that we do not have a cure for this disease. No one should lie to you. There's no cure now. Research is on work, but there's no cure and there's no vaccine. And we, in Malawi specifically, we do not have enough facilities to take care of the city. Remember, out of 100 infected, eight out of 100 do not get severely ill. They get well within a few days, just like any human, right? But there's between 14 and 20 out of every 100, yeah? Between 14 and 20 out of every 100 who are going to need to be hospitalized, yeah? When they go to the hospital, it's not as simple as going to the hospital. Because we go to the hospital to get the cure, right? So we get malaria, we go to hospital, we get la and we get better. But in this case, there's no treatment for the disease. So why are we going to the hospital? We are allowing those patients to call that number and then when they get to the hospital, we are supporting them to stay strong and alive as their bodies on their own fight this disease. So the disease fights the land, it destroys the lands. As the disease is destroying the lands, the hospital people, the nurses, the doctors who support you to make sure that you are still breathing, they give you oxygen, yeah? And in a lot of cases, there's need for what we call ICU, intensive care, in which the doctors put machines that take over your breathing function, yeah? How many facilities of that level do we have? The answer that you have is also the answer that I have. So the best thing to support the mayor's call, to support the president's call is to prevent the disease as much as possible. Finally, let me speak to information sources. We are aware that there's a lot of false information secreted and sometimes causing unnecessary panic. Some rumors have it that Africans cannot die from this disease. Africans are strong. Malawi is very hot. These things are happening where the climate is very cold, so it can't happen here. We know for sure as of now, for the six African countries have this disease, yeah? 4,264 cases have been confirmed in Africa, where even testing is very limited. But we have already identified 4,264 cases. 134 people have already died on African soil from this disease. We therefore request residents of Blanta City as well as the people of Malawi to check and ensure that the information that they are receiving on social media platforms is verified before forwarding further. Because this information spreads by just forwarding and forwarding and forwarding. Be responsible. When you receive unverified information, it should end with you. Don't pass it on. And only believe in information that is coming from the Ministry of Health, the Society of Medical Doctors and other leaders who are well-informed, like our mayor here. We urge all people in authority, by this I mean everyone in authority. They should engage as much as possible, medical personnel through our society, the Society of Medical Doctors, their Minister of Health and other Ministry of Health sanctioned organs before they speak to the public to avoid giving the public false information, giving the public false hope, giving the public information that may put them in danger. Consult us. It is our job and we're spending day and night reading and following this pandemic. and finding ways of how best we can protect the nation. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That's the Society of Medical Doctors. Maybe a word from our Malawi Police Service. As we move forward, the mayor said we work with the law enforcement agents to make sure that these measures are followed. So now we should hear from the Malawi Police Service. Just a minute. The mayor says, the Blanta Council or members of press, their house. I'd like to agree what the mayor would say. We'll work together whatever they say. And we, for now, but we haven't established some of the measures which the head of state say. Whereby ourselves are being clean using colored water. As well as, as Paul Oakes said, for him by distance, we are also telling him to reuse colored water. We have also contacted the DHL Office whereby we are conducting session meetings with various police stations within the city of Blanta. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, members of the media, if there are issues or clarification from all the members that have spoken, this is your time, if you wish to do so. Members of the media, if there are any issues. Yes, Mananaja, you seem to be...
Yes, it's just a proposal if we may be in the interest of time, just to go one-on-one.
Okay. There's a proposal from your colleague, guys, that in the interest of time, you do interviews for publications.
That's in order.
That's in order? Okay. We start with the...